Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2016. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Coniff.
President.
Salem Derby.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
J.P. Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McFoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Could I have, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion for approval of the minutes of September 7th?
Second.
Motion approved the second September 7th minutes, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Public speak time, is anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearing? Mr. Mason, if you could just state your name and position for the record.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. It's that time of year again, so I have a few announcements regarding some upcoming events. We have our sixth annual Harvest Festival, that is Saturday, October 15th, from noon to six. Pumpkin carving, music, Dan Kane and Friends will be playing inflatable slide, bounce houses, kids' games, all kinds of fun stuff. Pie eating contest, which is a fan favorite. This year, we added a horse-drawn carriage hayride through the park. Yeah, so instead of the train that we've had in the past, we went with that. So there will be a bonfire in the park from four to six as well after the event at Pavilion Three, so people can stay around and enjoy a nice evening in the park. The Yappy Valley Dog Show, it starts at 11 that day, so once again, the dog show will be in the park on Sheehan Field. We kind of combined with them, I don't know, three or four years ago, it's worked out well, so they get a lot of people in attendance for that. So we just hope for good weather. We also have the Rag Shag Parade coming up on Tuesday, October 25th, starting at Maple School at 6:30 and ending at the East Hampton Savings Bank. That's the new route, this will be the third year of doing that for that. So those are upcoming events. There's youth basketball signups, summer soccer signups, things like that are on the flyer as well. If you didn't pick it up, you have them down there in your boxes downstairs.
Counselor Winnie.
John, do you have all these things up on your website? Could you do a plug for the website? Do you have it up and running?
I know there's a, our Facebook.
Okay.
Facebook@Facebook.com/etonpumpkin, so E-Town Pumpkin. Sam's in charge of the Facebook, I don't do the Facebook stuff, so yeah, she posts a lot of stuff. I know it's, all the events are posted on our Facebook, she posted it yesterday.
She puts in her announcements, John, because she signs them for us.
Yeah, and then they go into the announcements. So this just is hot off the press that you guys got today.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, swim lessons?
Yes.
Are those at Wilson?
Yes, those are held at Wilson School. Yep, use their swimming pool for that.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the council? Please feel free to come up and state your name and address. Okay, not seeing any. Communications, elected officials, boards, committee, and correspondents, we have nothing written that Mr. Mason hasn't covered, but again, I want, if there's anything in any of the districts or at large, any of the councilors would like to inform us or the public about, this is a good opportunity. Counselor Smith?
Just a reminder that the Whitebrook Middle School open house is tonight from 6:00 to 7:30, and then, at least for Center Pepin, it's tomorrow at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Mayor, Communications, Mayor Kager.
So one of the things under the communications you'll note is, it doesn't require any action, but it's the capital plan, and the only thing I wanted to draw your attention to is what we did a little differently this year, is we added, obviously, all the requests for '17 are on there, but the very last page is '16, so it has all the things that we've done last fiscal year. So I thought that would be of interest, and I just wanted to point it out, because it's amazing, sometimes we forget all the things we do, and looking at it, you know, we've looked at it 100 times, and actually, just today, I was thinking of a couple of things that I need to put on there, too. So I thought it would be good to have it in the future for future records.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, did you want to comment about MGL 60, and that was under Mayor Communications?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so that is just another, it's kind of what it says, establishing a revolving account, and what that account would be is for us, now, when we collect any type of, you know, regarding the tax titles or whatever, whenever we collect any type of, our expenditures are first, and when we collect attorney's fees, that type of thing, this would give us the ability to put it in a separate account, and we could keep them there. Like, payment for tax titles obviously goes right, you know, for the taxes, it doesn't go into that revolving account, but it could be our legal costs for attorney's fees, it could be your advertising fees, recording fees, all different things. So what we would like to do is have an account for that, and obviously, when we collect the attorney's, the legal fees, too, and then we could empty the legal fees directly out of there, instead of always paying for them ahead of time out of our individual budgets, which is what we've been doing now. So it's just a little bit easier way, and then we could keep, we could retain some funds in there, so that when it is time to advertise, and some of these ads are shockingly high, they can be, these can be a couple of thousand, it could be 5,000 for some of these ads. So we could have these in there, we could have the funds in there, we wouldn't always have to just get it out of our regular budget and keep them in there, and instead of paying for the attorney fees out of our budget lines, and recording, and advertisement, and that. So it's just really a little cleanup, and, but you need to accept that chapter section for us to do that.
These will obviously be sent to Finance, but if any other, if there's any questions for the mayor right now, we'll get to that later. Counselor Rist?
Move that this request be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, motion second to move the request to approve MGL. Chapter 60, Section 15 be to Finance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Start on standing committees, Finance, Counselor Rist?
Everything that's on our current agenda is up for public hearing. There will be a meeting on the 28th at 5 o'clock in room one, regular meeting time, and at this time, I'd like to do a first reading and move one of our new requests to Finance for review. We have a request from the mayor to, for borrowing, the amount requested is $460,000 to be funded by borrowing, to be borrowed or bonded for the purpose of paying for an addition of ADA accessible playground features at Daley Field Playground, renovation of stone building bathrooms, redesign and construction of Non-Attuck Park entrance, approved by the Finance Director and the mayor. I would like to move this to Finance for review.
Second.
Okay, a motion of Finance to, move to Finance, request for bonding, borrowing of $460,000. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Does that conclude for you?
Yeah, this concludes, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks. Public Safety, Counselor Carey?
Public Safety hasn't met since our last full meeting. All three agenda items are ongoing. Couple, two of the older ones, we're hoping to have wrapped up soon, and the next meeting is to be scheduled.
Okay.
concludes for tonight.
Thank you. Appointments, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Appointments Subcommittee met this evening at 5:30 to discuss the Finance Director serving as Treasurer slash Collector position, and that's filled by Melissa Zawatski. Since this is, I'm going to ask the mayor to come forth to speak to this position.
So this position, this appointment you have in front of you is a little different than, you know, what you've seen in the past. There are some of the councilors that have been here, I don't want to say forever, but for a very long time, and honestly, from the beginning of the council. But there's, but there's also councilors that, you know, that weren't here when, when we created the position of Finance Director, it was, it was a lengthy process, and there was a lot of discussion with the former mayor and the city councilors, and what they, they believed that a Finance Director position should be put in, put in place, especially for the security of the city, for if and when you had a mayor come in that is not familiar with budgets, or finances, or that thing, it would be the security of the city. So, but at that point in time, and again, I have to, I have to give everybody credit for really good planning for the future. What it was intended is to be, you don't need a Finance Director, but you need a Treasurer. So you have to have a Treasurer. So our Finance Director, Melissa presently, also serves as our Treasurer. Now, this position was created in the Finance Director position to also be able to serve as Treasurer and Collector. And you're probably very aware of, a lot of cities and towns, that's a common practice to have a Treasurer Collector. And so it was actually created for the future, and as you know, our admired Elizabeth Gendron has retired, and whenever openings open, that's the time to change, you know, make some changes, and actually, for this reason, is put a plan into place that was planned, and it was funny, we were looking at it in Finance Subcommittee, and the dates on it, it was, actually, went to the council in December of 2006, and was approved in 2007. So, but this was the original intent for this position, and I have gone ahead and done a temporary appointment of Melissa Zawatski, in case you don't know her last name. Said it good, though. And, but before that, even now, even though I knew that was the intent, what we did is we did a lot of research, probably overdid it, but I had our city attorney involved, and actually, your City Council President, Joe, also, we had, you know, went, made sure discussions were had, and we also contacted, we didn't need to, but we did anyway, we contacted the DOR, you know, to make sure this was legit, and they obviously said absolutely. And I couldn't contact the State Ethics, but Melissa did, and she actually, you know, did it in my presence, and they said there's no issues there at all. So we've crossed more Ts and dotted more Is than we needed to do, but we figured, you know, being over-prepared is better than being under-prepared, and I think the way Melissa is, she's been obviously acting for a while, or temporarily appointed, and we're going to review the office and see, you know, what, what it requires, if it requires anything, and go from there. But right now, oh, and it's also really, I think, interesting to know that Melissa came to us from, before she was here, she came to us from Palmer, where she served as a Treasurer Collector, and which is, it's important for a lot of reasons, but she's also a certified Collector and a certified Treasurer. So everything is in place, and she's going to be, what she's been doing now is, it's extended to a 40-hour position, and what she's doing now is 20 hours in one office and 20 hours in the other. And it's been, you know, it's been going good so far, but I'm certainly, you know, entertain any questions that you might have, because I know it's a little different than what we had, but honestly, this is putting a plan from, you know, back then into place.
Any questions for Mayor Kager?
I know that, I was there in '06, and I remember the discussions, and we had quite a few, you're absolutely right, it was very well-vetted, and the plan was to have a Finance Director, it was important for the community. And the concept was that the Finance Director would indeed serve both functions, Treasurer and Collector, at some point in the future, perhaps, but at least, we'd have a Finance Director in the interim. The questions I have, though, have to do with the overall picture of the structure of the Collector's Office, the total budget for the Collector's Office, how you envision that, given that you'll have a Finance Director serving as the Collector, and will you need to have new staff, will there need to be someone, not at maybe Betty's level, but another level, could you maybe tell us a little bit about that?
Those are really good questions, and I'm glad you brought that up for clarity. So the way Melissa is now, she's Finance Director serving as Treasurer, she is our Finance Director. Now, the Finance Director position, when it was created, and it was also created as a Finance Department, and then a Finance Director position, in the Finance Director job description, it refers that she can serve as Tax Collector and Treasurer, which have separate job descriptions. So they have, you know, they have different duties that, you know, are assigned to that. And as I said, she's going to be doing 20 hours in one and 20 hours another, and what we're doing at this point is exactly that, evaluating, what does the office need? Restructuring, I've done a lot of restructuring, and I know sometimes change is difficult for people, but unfortunately, it's not difficult for me. So there, you know, we're reviewing to see what it does need, and if it does need additional staff, where it would be. So we're just not, we're taking advantage of, just like any other position opens, we don't just fill it as is, just because it's always been that way, you know, we take it as an opportunity to see what it needs, and we've, Melissa's already had some restructuring in her office. As you'll remember, we had the school payroll position eliminated, you know, under school, and that is now in the Treasurer's Office. So there's staffing there, and it was a totally different position that was created, and by freeing up different funds, it allows us to do different things, as a matter of fact, it allowed us to have a full-time business agent for the school department. So, you know, we use funds where they, where they're critical, and when we have, not that there's ever such a thing as excess funds, but when we do, you know, we put them toward the critical needs that we really have.
Let me just, did she answer your question?
I think so. So it sounds like we're not going to make any changes or any, until, or any, anything permanent that would be new.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, J.P., yes.
Without the council being aware of your review of the entire office.
I have, the change is that we, I will not be posting a position for Tax Collector. The position will be Finance Director, serving as Treasurer and Collector, that is the position. It will go to what was originally the intent of the councilors and the prior administration.
And there's no, there's no additional salary change, because that was the original, the original plan.
Well, there is a little salary change, exactly. It doesn't change the pay plan, that's correct, it doesn't change the Finance Director position. What it does is it increases hours to 40, you know, for obvious reasons.
Which makes sense.
Right, right.
Okay.
And if we decide, I'm sorry, if we decide that, that, you know, as we review the office and we're going to make, you know, make some changes, and everybody has a different style of doing things, as you're, as you're well aware, and if we decide that additional staffing is needed, we'll know where, you know, we'll know where.
Counselor Winnie?
Yeah, could you just expand on that a little bit? When you told, when you were talking to us in appointments, that Melissa physically will be serving 20 hours in the Finance Director's Office, and then 20 hours in the afternoon, she'll be in the Collector Treasurer's Office.
That's correct.
So physically, she will be in one office in the morning, and then the other office in the afternoon, so she will have a physical presence.
Exactly, Joy, that clears it up a little bit, not just the 20 and the 20, you know, 20 coming from Tax Collector's Budget, and 20 coming from the Treasurer's Budget, it'll actually be physical. She has a desk, a computer, a phone, all set up, business cards, all set up in the Tax Collector's Office, and she has her existing office in the Treasurer's Office.
Thank you. Okay, any additional questions or comments for the mayor? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Okay, do the councilors have any further discussion on this?
Soon, yeah.
Okay, we approved this unanimously, three to zero, at the City Council Appointment Subcommittee meeting, and so I would like to make a motion to move this through the full council for a vote.
Second.
No, I mean, could you read, like, Melissa Zawatski for a final answer?
Sure, sure. I would like to make a motion that we approve Melissa Zawatski to the Board/Committee of the Finance Director serving as Treasurer Collector, with a term expiration of December 31st, 2019.
Second.
Motion second to approve the appointment of Melissa Zawatski as Finance Director, serving as Treasurer Collector. Any last-minute comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I'll move that we open the public hearings.
Second.
Motion second to open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Public hearings are open. Counselor Rist?
Unfortunately, councilors, these are all mine, you'll have to be there with me. The first item up is for an interdepartmental transfer. It is for $8,543. This was an old bill. For those of you that don't know what an old bill is, it's a bill that was for service that happened in FY '16, but invoiced after the fiscal year began. It cannot be paid by law, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, can't be paid by law out of accounts that are budgeted in, like, the fire department's budget in this case. Right, so it has to be funded out of the Reserve Fund, free cash, or stabilization. So the mayor's chosen the Reserve Fund, we approve this three to zero, it's a typical thing that happens the beginning of every fiscal year. Any questions for anybody from the council?
Was there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council on this appropriation? No? Okay, Counselor Rist?
Then I'll move that the council approves the following appropriation. The amount requested is $8,543.21 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, the full amount of $8,543.21, to be transferred to fire medical expenses, $1,837.86, and to fire vehicle repairs, $6,705.35, for a total of $8,543.21, for the following purpose, to provide funds for FY '16 expenses.
Second. Okay, motion second to approve the departmental transfer. Comment, Counselor Winnie?
Yeah, I just, I have one question for the Finance Committee. The first two amounts for the transport and the pulley deck, was that for one of our firefighters? That was, what, was it one of our fires, or was it a, was it a mutual aid situation?
You got me there, and the fire chief isn't here, you know?
I have a motion on that.
I have to remove the motion if you really want an answer.
Yeah, I really do want a motion.
I hereby remove the motion from the floor, while the second, second is removed.
All those for?
Jane. Thank you.
It's one of ours.
You have to go to the board. Sorry.
They are expenses for one of our firefighters under 111F, the Public Safety Workers Comp.
So did the incident happen in North, in East Hampton?
Correct.
At an East Hampton fire?
Yes.
Because I just, I had to ask about that, because it was transported by Southampton?
Yes.
Wasn't transported by one of our own ambulances?
With that, I'm assuming it was because our crews were on scene.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that would make sense. All right. Okay, I just.
So I just, also, I heard counsel, because as you, for the record, if you could just state your name and your position.
Sorry, Jane Sack, with Personnel Director.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of our officers of the government before I put a motion forward? Okay. I will, once again, make the same motion to approve $8,543.21. Since I already read it, I assume I'm okay, it's for funds for FY '16 expenses.
Second.
Motion second to approve the departmental transfer of $8,543.21. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
The second interdepartmental transfer is a Reserve Fund transfer of $12,750. This is because our Workman's Compensation 111F insurance fund is low when we got the bill, so our Personnel Director asked for more money to cover the budget being low for that amount. Do you have any questions?
Anyone from the public or government like to comment? Mayor Kager?
Just something, you know, matter of interest also, when we do the budgets, you know, this is when we're working on them in January and February, we contact our insurance companies, and, you know, same thing for liability, workers' comp, health insurance, and ask them, you know, what type of an increase are you expecting? It's just an estimate. So, you know, we do the best we can, but sometimes, and the reason we know this right away, is the bill for workers' comp, along with liability, comes in for the whole year, and the reason we pay it all the way for the whole year is we get a huge discount by paying it off immediately. So we take advantage of every discount we have. So it's just your best estimate, and claims are, workers' comp and liability, unfortunately, are based on claims. So when it does increase, you know, that's because of that.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Counselor Rist?
Okay, I'll make a request and a motion for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $12,750 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, $12,750, to be transferred to the Workman's Compensation-111F account, $12,750, for the following purpose, to provide funds for increased premiums for workers' compensation.
Second.
Motion second to approve the departmental transfer of $12,750. Any additional questions or comments from the councilors? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Next, we have three CPA fund requests. I'm going to do the $20,800 one first. This was a request from the Mudders, from Mudders, the Spumic Trust, I believe, right? Mudders Field, okay. We already approved $105,000 from the CPA for this particular renovation, they needed $20,000 more to complete it, and the CPA voted nine to zero to fund it, and the Finance Committee voted three to zero to fund it. I'll allow John Bader to come up and explain a little bit about what it's for, but it is wonderful, and this has a, there's going to be an opening ceremony, I think, October 8th, is it?
October 8th, Saturday, 10:30.
And this is really, so you know, this is really about accessible trails, so handicapped persons can use our trails, and that's what this does, it helps connect it. Go ahead, John.
Right, and Karen's going to be, by the way, Karen's going to be one of the featured speaker at that.
Does she know that?
She knows.
She has a surprise face.
Anyway.
Blindsided.
John Bader, I've been a longtime president of the Puscombe Conservation Trust, time for a change, I think.
Nope, nope.
No, no, we think you're doing a great job, John.
Anyway, Mudders Field is located between East Green Street at the cul-de-sac and East Street, and it's a six-acre acre parcel, some farm, old farm field, and some woodland. And we are trying, we originally got some CPA funding, true, for the main project, but as projects go like this, we had some complications and some additions we had to think about, so now we're seeking extra funding. And I'll just go over shortly, briefly, these four subprojects connected to this. The first project was an improvement to our East Street, East Green Street entrance. We always had a drainage problem there, the water would run off down from the street and go down to the Alice Mudders Lawn and our property, down that old farm road. And so we attempted to fix it, and we fixed up the area pretty much, but we still had some drainage problem, and then we found out that people from the East Green Street area, neighborhood there, they had, some people with wheelchairs were trying to attempt to go down through that entrance, and it's not an official handicap entrance, the official handicap entrance is at the other end, where we have a parking lot on East Street side. So we figured, well, they're going to keep going down there anyway, we decided to do another renovation there, make it easier for them to go in, packed it down with stone dust, and we took care, I hope, of, you know, the drainage problem there for good. We'll see how that goes, but I think it's settled now. So that's number one project. The second project was extending the accessible trail on our, from our, from the north side to our main trail system. And so we have maybe a 25, 30-foot extension on the north side there, leading up to a ravine, and we got a place where you can turn around, wheelchair easily, there's a boulder with a plaque there and some benches, and we had it roped off, not roped off, but cabled off, and we have steps leading down to our main trails. And what this enables handicapped people to do is actually position themselves right at the edge of that ravine, and there's a stream going through, coming in from the brook, and overlooks some wetland, and then up the rise, and you see the Mountain View Farm, and we have a trail along the edge of the Mountain View Farm also, so there's a pretty good view from there, and it really helps, and it makes, it's a good addition to that accessible trail. The third project is the butterfly garden, two butterfly gardens. We had these two Michelangelos of the Stonework Society act, so to speak, come in from Ashfield, I forgot the name of the brother, start with. I forgot the name of the brothers, start with V. Via Brothers or something, and these guys are good, and so they, what they did was make a, made an enclosed area, like a wall, but it's all enclosed, and it's about fourteen, fifteen feet long maybe, and maybe six to eight feet wide, and it's this high, and all goshen stones, it's beautiful. And what we plan to do is add soil to it and plant crails that attract butterflies, and this will happen later on, it's fall or in the spring, depending on how the drought goes. But it's beautiful, and we've got comments on them, and so I think in attracting butterflies, but we wanted to do that in the first place anyways. Fourth project is installing interpretive signage. We have all kinds of signs around the property, but they're mostly telling you about what not to do and what to do and the layout of the property, but these are informative, educational, and they talk about the geology, the ecology, the flora and fauna of the area. So, a lot of these trails do have these, so it's going to help. So, that's it in a nutshell, and all I can say is it's become a very popular spot, even before this project was even halfway done, people were using that accessible trail, and it's also used by deer and foxes, and there's a rumor going around that the deer are, use it as a racetrack, and the fox sit on the sidelines and they judge who the winner is, but I don't know how true that is, but.
Probably.
Yeah.
He lives right there.
There's a lot of wildlife around there, yeah. So, that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. Bader before, at least? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the council, for Councilor Rist, or any of the councilors? Okay, Councilor Rist, turn the motion.
As I mentioned, the CPA approved this enthusiastically, nine to zero, and we're very happy with this whole project. Money well served. So, I'm going to make a motion that we hereby approve the amount requested of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space Account, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, to be appropriated to the Mutter Field Backyard Brook Accessible Trail of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, for the following purpose, to provide funds to complete the recreational improvements at Mutter's Field and the Brickyard Brook Conservation Area. Also, that the council approve the conditions and stipulations established by the CPA Committee for this request.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to approve the supplemental appropriation of twenty thousand eight hundred from CPA expenses. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next project is-
April, was that October eighth?
Ten thirty.
The next request is from the pausing authority. This is for reasonable accommodation accessibility. They want, they came to us originally, which this council may require, may remember, we approved fire suppression devices for the apartments, so that should there be a pot boiling over and the people forget, there's a suppression device on the stove so that they would put the fire out. When that request came to the CPA, Deb Walker, person in charge, mentioned that they had an issue with needing to put more ramps in for accessibility. They had been previously using their own funds for this, which was hard, because they don't have a lot of funding for this kind of expense. The CPA Committee enthusiastically, well, eight to one, approved the forty thousand dollars, and the Finance Committee voted three to zero. Is there anyone here that can speak to this, besides the?
Anyone here from?
Deb's not here tonight. So, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, but to us, I have lots of pictures, these are the kinds of ramps that they're putting in. It also has to do with things like shower accessibility, it's not just ramps to get in. Some of these ramps cost a fortune, a lot of them are portable and able to be moved from apartment to apartment in any of the housing, when the person no longer needs it at that apartment, but some of them are very expensive because there's more than one level. So, we don't know how many of these will do, but hopefully four or five of them, they were hoping for, and they gave us a pretty good, she gave us a lot of information on sample, they had been building them in the past, so she had sample invoices and work orders to show us for it. Any case, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Okay, let me just check for the, anyone from the public who would like to address this? Mayor Kager?
I just want to reiterate one other thing that Councilor Rist mentioned, and that came up in the Finance Subcommittee, was how they're portable, so they, you know, the good part about these is they can be used many times over, because you never know where you're going to need them. And I don't know if any, I'm sure everybody has dealt with elderly at some point in time, or it doesn't always have to be elderly, but how difficult one step is to get into your house. So, it's a difference of being in your home and not being in your home a lot. So, these handicap accessibility ramps are, I think, vital to people staying in their homes.
Thank you. Councilor Smith, is she here?
I would just like to echo that same sentiment. As someone who studies aging, we know that people prefer to stay in their own homes, and the combination of these two projects, being both accessibility projects, really opens up the diversity of age diversity and allows for that to be maintained within East Hampton, and I think that's wonderful.
Thank you. Got to ask, okay, is there anyone from the public besides the mayor? Okay, I think so. Councilor Rist?
I'm just going to throw my two cents in, in that while we're doing this, we're keeping with ADA compliance and the federal government, so less opportunity for us to come under the watchful eye of them and possibilities of being brought to litigation, so it's a good thing.
Any other questions or comments? And I would think from the public, Councilor Rist?
Therefore, I'd like to move the supplemental appropriation request of forty thousand dollars to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing Account, forty thousand dollars, to be appropriated to the Housing Authority Reasonable Accommodation Accessibility Account, forty thousand dollars, to be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the purchase and installation of accessible ramps and other reasonable accommodations for East Hampton Housing Authority properties. Also, that the council approve the conditions and stipulations established by the CPA Committee for this request.
Is there a second? A motion of second for supplemental appropriation of forty thousand dollars for housing accommodation accessibility. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
The next appropriation is rather complicated, and I'm very thankful that Jessica Allen, our planner, will be here. I'd like her to come up and explain it to the council. There's two actions here, this is a large request, but it's wonderful in that it helps affordable housing in two ways. One is a rehab program that allows, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, income and credit-worthy persons to get funding for rehabilitation and home buying. There's a lot of aspects to this, there's a deferred depreciation payment schedule for both, there's a vendor that will administrate both, one of which is the, is actually has to be an RFP process for the home buyer, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will deal, which one are they dealing with? They're dealing with the rehab. So, there's two, so this doesn't, so the council knows this isn't being put on the planning department to oversee, from the point of view of administering it day to day, but it is being overseen by the planning department in the sense that they get to see the end result of decisions with regard to who's doing what.
Okay.
Jessica. Oh, and Kathy Crowell is here too, if we have any questions for the housing.
Can you guys, just for the record, if you state your name and position?
Jessica Allen, City Planner.
Kathy Crowell, member of the East Hampton Housing Partnership.
So, there's two aspects to this request. I'm going to speak directly to the housing rehab, and then Kathy's going to talk about the first time home buyer program. So, the housing rehabilitation program is a program that we currently run under our Community Development Block Grant Program. In 2011, there was a CPA request to, to request CPA funds for housing rehabilitation outside the CDBG target area, and for those who remember, and I have a map if you need a refresher of where the CDBG target area is located, these are, this is only location in the city where we are legally allowed to spend Community Development Block Grant funding, and we, when we are lucky enough to be awarded for CDBG funding, we typically have a housing rehab component to those grants, and this is the area of where that funding can be spent. What we're asking for under CPA is, we know that there's a lot of homeowners that live outside of this target area that also need housing rehabilitation services, and we have a waitlist of about ten individuals on the comprehensive list of fifty individuals that we know in the city that have requested services for housing rehabilitation. So, the hundred thousand dollars would be used, the majority of it would be used for construction. The housing rehabilitation program really is to bring the units back up to code in terms of safety. We're not building big renovations, we're not doing, you know, we're not installing hot tubs, we're really just bringing things back up to code and making them safe for individuals. And so, last round, when this was funded, we were able to do four units, so I'm hoping that we'll get to be able to do that, at least three, probably four.
Can you talk about the deferred payment program?
Sure. So, typically how housing rehabilitation programs work is there's a loan of up to, up to thirty-five thousand dollars that's provided to the homeowner. That loan is forgiven if the homeowner stays in their home for fifteen years, so every year, one fifteenth of the loan is forgiven, and if the homeowner moves or sells the house before that fifteen years is up, then that money is repaid back to the city when go back to the CPA account.
That's what?
Are any of these housing units going to be considered as part of our low-income housing units?
Under the subsidized housing inventory. So, the process for, so the policy changed not too long ago under the Department of Housing and Community Development in terms of the housing rehab units counting on the subsidized housing inventory. They used to count, now we would need to have a permanent deed restriction on the unit in order for them to count, which is a, an additional burden, so, so from now on, we do have units that are currently on the inventory, and when those expire, those will be gone. However, you know, most of the individuals that take advantage of this, of this program, a lot of them are seniors, we have a lot of folks that are just, don't have the funds to be able to bring their houses back up to code, and so it's allowing low-mot income individuals to remain in their houses, to continue to stay in East Hampton, even if the unit itself isn't being placed on the inventory.
Okay, any additional questions for?
One technical question on the inventory of a, an affordable property, affordable unit.
A deed-restricted property?
Well, not necessarily deed-restricted, but an affordable unit under the old terms, there was an expiration date under the old terms?
Well, the deed restrictions expire, so yes.
The deed restriction expires, okay.
So, yes.
But now, now you're suggesting that in order to qualify the unit as affordable housing, there'd have to be a permanent deed restriction?
It can be fifteen years, thirty years, ninety-nine years in perpetuity, so.
You can still do a fifteen year and just have it be affordable.
Yes, but somebody needs to make sure that if, if whoever is in that house is actually income-qualified, so there's additional monitoring that needs to happen if there was a deed restriction placed on that property.
Right, okay, thank you. And while you're talking about monitoring, I just had a question about, you said that we had been doing, funding, giving rehab money to, to properties in the past, thirty-five thousand, up to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Up to thirty-five.
And then it was forgiven at one fifteenth-
Every year.
-of the debt per year. I imagine most people, if they live long enough, would, if they're, live through it, would like to stay and expire the debt, but some leave. Do we have a sense of how many that is that have left in the past, and who monitors that? And who collects the money that's owed if a property's sold?
Are you talking about under CDBG?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we probably have maybe one to two a year of individuals that repay. That money comes back to the city, it gets processed through the mayor's office, and it gets returned to the CDBG accounts.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for? Okay, no.
The other component of the request is the first-time home buyer program, and this is for people who are either residents of East Hampton or not residents of East Hampton, but who want to buy a house in East Hampton, and this is their first home. There's a similar mechanism in place with this program of a deferred payment loan of up to seventy-five hundred dollars for six buyers, and the purpose of the loan is to help with down payment or, and/or closing costs. For many first-time home buyers, there's a gap or a barrier when it comes to down payment and closing costs. They, they have enough income to pay a mortgage, and they have good credit, but the gap to meet the costs of down, all the costs of down payment and closing costs is difficult. A lot of prospective buyers have student loan debt, that's one of the big barriers right now. So, this program, the DPLs are to help address that issue. The other part of this program is a, an education and counseling program. Many of you might be familiar with the first-time home buyer workshops that are offered in many communities where groups of potential buyers come together over a four-week period and get all kinds of information about the process of buying a home, everything from credit scores to how to apply for a mortgage and how to hire an attorney, that kind of thing. In addition to that, there's individual counseling for people that might need further assistance, for example, in bringing their credit score up to a point that the banks will consider them appropriate for homeownership. And then there is a line item of about twenty-five hundred dollars we're projecting that might be needed for people to have lead testing done on their homes, which is a requirement. So, the total of that program is seventy-five thousand dollars. The counseling and education piece anticipates there'll be about forty to forty-five participants in that, some of whom will be able to buy and perhaps use the down payment assistance, some might not be able to buy at this time, but that's the purpose of the counseling, is to help them figure that out.
Councilor Rist?
So, there's two aspects of this, you might enhance it, there's a five-year deferred repayment program, so they can't buy a house and flip it. That was an important comment that I liked, if you want to explain that.
Sure. The mechanism is the same, there's the loan for the down payment assistance, which goes actually directly to the bank or the mortgage company. The legal document for the loan specifies that a fifth of the loan will be forgiven after the first year, going up to five years. If the, if the household moves during any of that time, they are required to pay back what is owed.
And the other aspect of this is, and I think I mentioned it, I think the planning department put out an RFP to hire the vendor that will administer this program, because it won't be Pioneer Valley, Pioneer Commission, it's a separate vendor, and there are vendors that have been used that are out there, so this is not new.
Is that as well, is that the design line? Is that what that means? It says design seventeen thousand?
I'm not sure what that means on that. We, yeah, it, well, it's part of the budget, I'm just not sure what that means.
Do you see design?
Well, maybe it's first-time home buyers program, no, it has a separate seventeen thousand five hundred deal, and Jessica, what that might refer to?
It's an appropriation request, Jess, I don't know.
Oh, the contingency.
Right.
Is that a contingency?
Uh.
For the whole program? Let me see the budget.
Ten percent contingency, advertising, bidding, admin, seventeen-five.
Okay, that must be it. Yes.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to.
See, right here, I'm sorry, I didn't even see.
Right, so, in the past, when the Community Development Block Grant Program funded this, which was in 2008, was the last time the city offered a first-time home buyer program, we did need to, the city attorney to review the contracts that are between the city, the homeowner, and whoever the vendor may end up being, and so there is some legal cost to that, so this is to sort of cover his time if and when that might be needed.
Okay. Any additional questions for either? All right, yeah, we don't have a motion, Councilor, uh, not Councilor, Mayor Kager?
So, I think it's interesting that you've already approved something to keep, you know, seniors in their houses by handicap accessibility. Then you're looking at this, and I mean, it's, it's, you shouldn't say you have favorites, but these programs are phenomenal. Like, when you're talking about the housing rehab, it's, it's just a win-win for everyone. It's, it keeps seniors or people that can't afford to do structural repairs to their house, in their house. It also prevents blight, and as you know, some of these are just bringing the houses up to code. And as you know, some of these are just bringing the houses up to code. Now, there's strict criteria for this, so they have to meet, you know, the income deadline. And because of this, because of what a great program it is, there's long lines when you're talking 50-some-odd people. And it's great that we have a target area, you know, under CDBG, but there are so many people that have, you know, for so long wanted to get involved in this. So now, by doing it this way, this just extends it outside of the CDBG area. And then you look at first-time home buyers. So everyone knows the prices of houses and, you know, what your closing costs are. But again, this is not only strict criteria to be able to pay for your home once you get in there. They give you educational classes, which we use as a very area for the first-time home buyer classes. And so it teaches them, you know, everything, what the cost would be, you know, how you can apply. And I guess the good part is, a lot of them are successful after and are able to get the funds, but some of them realize that they really probably can't afford a house at that time. So it's education. It puts new, you know, new people into their first home ever, keeps elderly in there. I can't say enough about these. I think it's just like an excellent use of funds.
I wanted to let the council know also that we're impressed with the fact that this is happening all over the state with CPA funds. It's not unusual to East Hampton, has been done before. And in the actual law, MGL 44B that defines CPA use, one of the definitions is support of community housing shall include but not be limited to programs that provide grants, loans, rental assistance, security deposits, interest rate write-downs, or other forms of assistance directly to individuals and families who are eligible for community housing or to an entity that owns, operates, or manages such housing for the purpose of making housing affordable. So the law directly addresses what this appropriation is trying to fund. So it was...
Councillor, maybe you can answer this question for me, since you're on the CPA. We roughly take chunks of money for affordable housing, open space. Has... How has this appropriation affected the public, the affordable housing budget of the CPA? Or Jamie, did you want to speak to that?
I think it may depleted. But let me say this, we have a lot of funds in what's known as the undesignated fund. If you look at the budget that's on part of the page, those areas are budgeted by us, by the council and by the CPA. We are granted so much money that we have to add to those each year. It's 10%. I think we did 12 this year. But that doesn't mean that we can't use the undesignated funds for anything. It just means that in a... I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, but the reason we do this is for efficiency. If we're gonna do an affordable housing project, we're gonna take it from that account first, and then we're gonna use the other account to support it. But it's all CPA money, and it has to be used specifically by the law for these purposes. You can't just spend it on anything. Is that right? Did I do it right? No, I'm lying!
You don't need data, then, okay.
Can't put in roads.
Okay. Topia keeps saying it. Four motion on the table. Any other questions from the councillors, or anyone here? Councillor President?
I had a question. I just wanted to say I will abstain because real estate's my business, and I have lots to say on the subject, but I won't.
I hope you support it, but I just...
Oh, councillor, what?
I just wanna... I just wanna put the... Put it out there that, you know, the American dream is to always own your own home, be in your own home, not be a renter. And if there's a way that we can do that so that it's using this program that's being matched by the state, as well as our own tax money, to help people realize that, and then to help people that otherwise, you know, due to financial circumstances that cannot make the improvements, to keep their houses at least to a fair market value, to help them do that. In the end, I think it's just a good program. I'm definitely for it, so...
Okay. So councillor Reston, entertain a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion to the council approve a supplemental appropriation request of $192,500 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing, $183,812.34, and the CPA Reserve Fund of $687.66 for a total of $192,500, to be appropriated to the Housing Rehab Program account, $100,000, and the First-Time Home Buyer Program, $75,000, and the design, which is contingency, $17,500, for a total of $192,500. For the following purpose: to provide funds to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership for the first-time home buyer, housing rehabilitation programs, and also that the council approve the conditions and stipulations established by the CPA Committee for this request.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second for the supplemental appropriation of $192,500. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Is that the abstention?
Oh, one of us... I'm sorry, you're right.
I have one last item, which is really a clerical thing. As you know, we approved the increase in the... I'm not gonna find it now. The increase in the... Thank you.
Salary?
Salary for the clerk, and that was the primary vote. But Barbara discovered and gave us the need to approve the ordinance, which effectively changes that salary. So that's what this is about. It's similar to the pay plan. When we approve pay plan changes and amounts, we also have to approve the ordinance governing the pay plan. And typically, the Finance Committee does both because they're linked so closely. Any questions?
Questions? Anyone from the public who'd like to address or city government? That being said...
I move that we amend section 7.5, clerk to the city council salary in accordance with the Home Rule Charter, Article II, Section 2.8E. The salary of the city clerk... Of the clerk to the city council shall be $120 per month and $75 per city council meeting effective July 1, 2016.
Second.
A motion of second for the amendment of Chapter 7, Section 7.5, is just read. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion of second to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Well, let me see where we left. I'll look back through appointments, ordinance, councillor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance subcommittee did meet last Wednesday, where we discussed food truck ordinance, and we also discussed the plastic bag issue that we've been looking at. I'm happy to say I did some research on some of the food truck issues at Food Truck Friday last week, and I had some good insights, and I think we are moving in the right direction. It's not a fast truck that we're in.
Truck? You mean track?
Truck.
Okay.
It's a food truck. But, you know, we wanna make sure that we are thorough and are... Now that we do have quite a few food trucks coming to East Hampton, we wanna make sure that we're doing due diligence. So we are still working on that. And I don't know if... Councillor Smith, did you have anything you wanted to say about the plastic bag ordinance?
We had... When we have met so far, we had the public hearing to get a clear picture of where the public stands on this issue. And then we had another meeting where we talked about the science behind the bag issue and what the different options were. And now, as a subcommittee, we're doing up the task of pricing out what the alternatives would be for local businesses, because it's been shown that any ordinance like this is much more favorably considered when a lot of that grunt work is really put in place and we can say this is the actual cost difference it would be, and coming up with some different strategies to address that. So I'm looking forward to continuing those conversations.
And I would say that at our last meeting, one of the things that we did kind of look at was the direction that we wanted to take this in. And there are some ideas that the committee has. I feel like I can say with some confidence that we're not looking at necessarily an outright plastic bag ban. You know, so we are continuing to move forward with some of the ideas that we have, and we're gonna keep working on it. So councillor Reston?
One request I have is that, and I think you probably already discussed it at committee level, is that this be implemented over a long period of time so businesses can get ready for it. In other words, put it in place to happen six months from whenever we vote on it or something. I don't know how long they would need, but businesses have to plan and budget and whatever.
And I think that's, you know, paramount in our conversations have been the impact on all ends of the spectrum. So we're trying to be cognizant of that. Our next meeting will be next Wednesday, where we will continue on these two subjects and have great conversations and debate. So that will be at 6:00 PM on September 28. It will be probably after the finance.
We should be done with this. Do you wanna change the date of this, because it's 10:30 on...
Yeah. Still about a month left, again.
Oh, that's October. What am I... I keep taking it as October.
I wish, right.
My apologies to the council for being stupid.
That concludes.
Okay, thank you. Property, councillor Kozinski. No report. Okay. Rules and governmentation, councillor Reston?
No report.
We have not old business, and you took care of the new business, so I'm gonna take that motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion of second to adjourn. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.